All right, welcome everybody to the July 13, 2022 regular meeting of the Scotia Village Board of Trustees. We'll start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Callahan.
Here.
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 Here. We could have a moment of silence. One of our longtime citizens, Eddie Arrows, formerly Village Garage, died last week. I went to the wake. It was... He was a longtime stalwart of the village. They've done Sunny Side Road. Just a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay, privilege of the floor. We have two different privileges of the floor. Later on, we'll have one relating to the skateboard law. The first one is just a general. Anybody'd like to speak to anything about the village? Do we have anybody listed? Anybody here like to speak to the board? Seeing number close privilege of the floor. Item number four, local law 2022C relating to encumbrances on streets and sidewalks relating to skateboards. First part, it's a public hearing. Would anybody like to speak to local law 2022C? Okay. Anybody can we have a motion to approve local law 2022C?
I'd like to make a motion to approve local law number 2022C relating to encumbrances on streets and sidewalks relating to skateboards and inline skates.
I'd like to second that motion and I'd like to thank the participants who gathered the signatures for the petition, who followed this through. Congratulations to you young people. You know, thank you very much for going through the process, finding something that you feel passionate about and following the way that it should be done. Congratulations and thank you very much, so.
Yeah, they didn't bring their helmets, but they're here.
All right. So Clerk Callahan.
Absolutely, yes.
No, it was an explanation.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. I'm sorry, Joe, you should have signed in after the second. It would...
My biggest, I'm not objecting to skateboarders. That's the least of my problems. I would like to see them skateboard in a nice environment like down in Collins Park, which will be safe from traffic and pedestrians, so they can have all the fun they want. They don't have to worry about watching over their shoulder all the time. Secondly, the other problem that I have is got the bit is someone would have the pedestrian action to put it behind a hook for a loss. So, you know, that's two things that I really, really have objections with. I'd love to see them go down to the park and use the rake they got down there and fix it up for them to enjoy it. And it'll be a safe environment for them to use. And they can use it any time they want as his village residents, and they can have all the fun they want. And they won't have to worry about cars or trucks or any other pedestrian that may be in the way. That's my...
Thank you. Mayor Gifford may have just a moment to set the record straight for folks who saw this. First of all, skateboarding in the park can't happen with the way the law currently is written. It prohibits the use of skateboard and inline skates on any village-owned sidewalk or any village sidewalk and/or road. So without amending this law, they wouldn't skateboard. Folks, whether they're young or old, would not be able to skateboard in Collins Park. Secondly, we had in our first, one of our first work sessions after the petition with 250 signatures from young people and seniors and village residents were presented to us. We had our insurance agent come in and he said after 20 years of actually dealing with municipal insurance, he's actually not seen an issue where a lawsuit was brought against the village. We created this law specifically to provide defensibility to the village in case of incidences that relate to something that is not the village's responsibility. So, young people, 16 and older, 16 and younger, are required by law to wear a helmet. And parents are responsible to provide that helmet. And if an accident, pedestrian vehicle accident were to happen and the young person was not wearing a helmet and sustains the head injury, the Village of Scotia would be able to go to the law and say, unfortunately, in this particular situation, was not following the safe skate guidelines. Both Sheila and Ali sat with me for about an hour, went through the, and actually explained to me what it means to safe skate. We then took that page of what they deemed as safe skate guidelines and gave it to our village attorney, who then related it with other municipalities throughout New York State and developed this law. So this law, again, is aligned with what other municipalities have, including the City of Albany and the City of Schenectady. And I wish to also let village residents know that there are exclusion zones. For example, Mohawk Avenue, in the road and the sidewalk, is not permitted to skateboard there. Why? It's a busy intersection with freight traffic and commercial traffic. And it's also a busy corridor for business, so it's not safe to skate on the sidewalks there. In addition to that, the other state routes are Route 50 and 147, which are clearly unsafe. Those are on the exclusion zone, so you're not, you should not ride your skateboard or inline skate on the sidewalks or roads on those state roads. In addition to that, based on the recommendation from the Vehicle Traffic Safety Committee that reviewed this law and provided a recommendation that it was satisfactory, we added Cuthbert Street, which has a high number of vehicle pedestrian, vehicle and pedestrian incidences. We also added Shawnee and Washington because of the size of the street. There is the sidewalk, while the vehicle, the bike path could be used because the nature of a bike path is to use a skateboard. The sidewalks are narrow and the road is narrow. And the same goes for Washington Ave. So a lot of time and energy went into making sure that this is as safe as possible. The responsibility now lies within the hands of all the parents and skateboarders to ensure that they are following this law. We also have a lot of cooperation from members of the PTA at the local school districts, the local school district, to make sure that our village young people are understanding and learning what it means to safe skate. And I can assure you, there are two student leaders in this audience here today. Sheila and Ali, who are going to make sure that their friends and family are also aware of what it means to safe skate. And I have full confidence that they can do so because they educated me. So with that said, I think all your concerns, Trustee Rizzo, are addressed.
I would like to say a couple of things, though, and I agree with everything that you said. I also agree with Trustee Rizzo. I want to, I want to thank all the children who got the petition completed. 250 signatures is a big congratulations to you, especially at your tender age. I do have concerns with the skateboard law, but I am a firm yes tonight, and a few things went into that. I do believe that this is a trend for the future in terms of municipalities moving forward. I was in New York City yesterday and it was amazing what I saw on the streets. I know, we are not in New York City, but just to give you a glimpse of what I saw yesterday was skateboards, electronic scooters, bicycles. So I have, I saw four lanes of travel on the same way yesterday with outdoor dining, which was beautiful. And also between the pavement, the sidewalk pavement and the street was a very narrow path of a bumper area, which only allowed single-use traffic. And I saw skateboards. I did see electric scooters and I saw bicycles. I saw two or three people that were together, but because of the width of that particular lane, there could only be one at a time. I was amazed that there wasn't a traffic jam. I was amazed to see the various modes of transportation. I do have concerns. I am an attorney. I did personal injury for over 10 years. Claims can be brought against the Village of Scotia. I'm hoping that they don't. I hope we don't have to revisit this. But I want everyone to be aware that that's a possibility. And even when you defend a claim, you have legal fees that may be associated with that that are an expense. So I hope this topic is not revisited in the future. I hope the kids are safe. I hope we don't have any issues with claims against the Village of Scotia. And as trustees and the mayor, it's our job to serve all residents. And we do have to take into consideration the repercussions in terms of potential liability. But we have carved out a law in which I hope that we can move forward and the kids are safe and they have a good time. However, I do want to put it out there. I've seen skateboards on Cuthbert. They haven't had helmets. They're under age 16. They have their headphones in, maybe carrying something. And I would caution, you can't be on Cuthbert. You can't be on all those streets that Trustee Cook have outlined here. We're trying to do something good for the community, for the children. And that goes for everyone, the young and the adults. So I, I hope that you can take into consideration my viewpoint. I do understand Trustee Rizzo's concerns. You know, it's been on the books for a long time, but there's been a lot of changes. And when I was in New York City yesterday, it kind of really opened my eyes. I won't be skateboarding in the Village of Scotia or New York City, but I wish everybody well. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
I do, I know the law is going to pass.
It's already passed.
I just want to say, I just want that all our kids abide by the law and really do a good job to prove us all wrong, that we can do it, we can do it. I don't want to see anybody hurt. That's the least of, I don't want to see anybody hurt, but I want to see everybody follow the rules. I say, good luck to everybody. I want to have a good time.
Thank you.
I'm not here to destroy anything. I'm just trying to make a couple of points. I really do want the kids to enjoy themselves and have a good time, but be careful.
Item number five. We have a motion to authorize the mayor to sign DOT Equitable Business Opportunity System user agreement. This is...
May I just have, can you just provide like a brief briefing about what exactly that is? I don't remember.
It's basically so we can do business with the state, right? I mean, it's not...
Is that the MWBE certification? Okay. So I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign New York State DOT Equitable Business Opportunity System user agreement.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post. Item number six. We have a motion to authorize the mayor to sign a contract with Prime Highway Contractors LLC relating to Washington Avenue Bike Pedestrian Connection, the amount of 498,656.71. This is our path around the east side of the lake, finally coming to fruition.
Oh, authorize the mayor to sign the contract with Prime Highway Contractors LLC relating to Washington Avenue Bike and Pedestrian Connection in the amount of 498,656.71. Sorry. I know you wanted to do that.
And George...
All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Okay. Item number seven. We have a motion to authorize payment number four to MJ Engineering and Land Surveying relating to the same project, the amount of 9,189.73.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. All right. Item number eight. We authorize the mayor to sign an architectural engineering consulting agreement with CHA relating to the Sunny Side Road Bridge.
I'll make a motion.
25,285.
I'll make a motion, authorize the mayor to sign an architectural engineering consulting agreement with CHA Consulting Incorporated related to the Sunny Side Road over air and track bridge rehabilitation or replacement in the amount of 725,285 dollars.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Item number nine. Can we authorize the mayor to sign January 1 renewal agreement of the Humana Group Medicare Advantage Plan?
I'll make that motion to authorize the mayor to sign the January 1 renewal of the Humana Medicare Advantage Plan.
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Item number 10. Motion authorize the mayor to sign a consent agreement with Niagara Mohawk Power Corporation related to easement. This is one of the many multitude of steps of getting us closer to tearing down the old sewage plant and leveling that spot, getting rid of the tanks. It's a very, the power company has an easement over top of our land there. And this is another easement, letting us work underneath that easement, so.
I'll happily authorize the mayor to sign the consent agreement with Niagara Mohawk Power Corporation related to easement and getting rid of that hideous wastewater treatment.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post. Item 11. This is a little more complicated than it looks. We have motion to authorize the mayor to sign online auction contract with Coller City Auctions. The thing that was sent out to you and everybody, I guess, was had the contract with Coller City Auctions, but it also had the list of items to surplus. And I don't know, do we need to have a separate resolution to surplus those?
Yeah.
Okay. So in our storage, which these companies so generously let us have, that building 403, we have a lot of surplus things going from things as little as chairs and desks and bicycles to a big old snow blower. And they, they have been remodeling that building to use as cold storage or something for them. And they, we can see the handwriting on the wall that we did get our stuff out of there. Most of it we don't need. There's a list attached to that to number 11, both from the police department, from DPW, of things to surplus. So, sorry?
There's also one for fire.
Right. Yeah, but that's, that's not stuff out there. That was something else, right? Yeah. Yeah. Right. So I guess before we authorize the, to sign the contract with Coller City, we ought to have some stuff to auction. Can we authorize the surplus of the three lists we have, from one from fire, one from DPW, and one from the police?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You okay with that, George?
Yeah, I just was looking at the list from DPW. I saw the email from the fire chief. I haven't seen one from from the chief of police yet. I do wish, I do wish I could bid on the 1948 snowgo.
Me too. You can.
I know, it's just...
You might risk your marriage, as would I, but...
I just got rid of another thing in the driveway, so I'm putting something else back and it probably wouldn't be the best thing.
Yeah. All right. Did we vote all in favor? Oh, did I? Did we? I'm sorry. Okay. So then can we authorize the contract with Coller City to sell those things?
Sign on my auction city. Coller City Auctions.
Second.
I'll second.
I think Justin won. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item 12. Mayor's comments to the board. I just I've been realizing that my time is coming closer to the end of my term. And some of the things in this are are things that I wanted in our agenda today, are things I've wanted to get done for a long time. And it's, it's feeling good. We're getting stuff accomplished, so I like that. I do want to say our employees have all been doing a wonderful job. We, we had a a fire drill Monday night at the two houses that Stewart's is scheduled to tear down. And crawling around in the smoke with, in the hot weather and rescuing pretend victims was pretty entertaining. I also particularly want to compliment it. I walk down from along Tenbrook Street every day and they've got the the DPW's, it's got the corners fixed up with ramps and those rumble strips, whatever they're called. But they, the state has been doing ones along Sack and Dog Road, and ours are every bit as good. Where our, our team has gotten really good at that. So anyway, it's good because I've got a bunch more to do. Do you know, Ryan? Yeah. They've got a lot of work to do. Okay, that'll do. Thanks. Correspondence liaison special committee reports. Heather?
I did have a meeting with Chief Wood. Thank you for your time, Chief Wood. We had various issues. The most important thing, you know, we talk about the firehouse and its, its value, its utilization. And I'm, I'm very happy to report that, you know, we, we are in need of a firehouse because we keep growing. Chief and I had a long talk with regards to the call volume. And the numbers are at an increase as of June 30th. We are over that number from last year. So I think that we're moving in the right direction. And with regards to the, we're going to have another meeting next week, but we also discussed, and I know you spoke with the mayor with regards to the possibility of getting a truck. So I don't know if you want to talk about that under new business or put it in a work session, but...
I think it's just next Monday, I think we talked about it. Then I didn't, we didn't get it on the agenda and I'd rather have it there.
Okay, so we'll talk about the truck, chief, in the next work session. I thank you for the email and I'm in support of the truck. We just have to see how we're going to be able to afford it, but that's my position. With regards to the Police Reform Committee, Trustee Cook and I are on that. We did have a meeting on June 14th. We did discuss various issues. And I, I know cameras is probably on your agenda, so I won't go into that at length. But we have been working on the camera issue for some time. The, the grant was approved a while ago. It's just a matter of processing the grant and getting those cameras up. The community is in great need of cameras, so I'm a strong advocate of that. There's been some information on social media from the chief. And I know he's looking forward to utilizing and obtaining those, but I'll have Trustee Cook follow up on that. We, that meeting was chaired by Lynn Trudell. And Lynn, I know that you're listening in on Zoom. And she does a great job, so I wanted just to thank her for spearheading the meetings for the last couple of meetings that we had. We are going to meet, meeting in September. Again, Officer Peckham, and I'm sure that's going to be in Trustee Cook's report, is the new resource officer. He will be going into training in July for about a week up in Saratoga. And I am very excited about his role between the village and the school. So a lot of good information to come with that after his training and also after our next Police Reform Committee meeting, which I believe is in mid-September. Report from town of Glenville. It's been all over social media. Thursdays in the park are back. I don't know if you've seen the schedule, but for the month of August at Indian Meadows, there are bands throughout the month. It's a, it's a great time. And the last week is going to be a movie. So that should be, should be really great for, for family time on Saturdays in the park. So that's all I have. Thank you for all the departments doing an outstanding job as usual. It's great to see everybody using Collins Park and everybody enjoy your summer. Thank you.
Thank you. George?
Not a lot for me this week, this month. Thanks again to all the department heads for doing such a good job. It's really great to see all the things that are going on in the day-to-day business. And again, I'd just like to thank the young people who took the opportunity to follow, follow the guidelines on how to bring legislation to your municipal body and how to follow it through and get it done. So again, congratulations and it's, it's an example of what can be done the way it should be. So thanks again.
Okay, I know we got a car show. We had over 200 cars in the car show. And it is one of the biggest car shows in the capital district. We had over 200 cars plus. We had a new parking team. It only took us 45 minutes to sell all the cars, all 200 cars on the street. Plus, we want to thank the store shop, Encumberd Farms, Relentous Park, the overflow in their properties and their lots. And we will send them a thank you certificate to the corporations, banking, religious, do that. It's going to be very popular. We also want to thank the first actual bank in Scotia, Upermass, the religious, use their park lot as usual for a staging area and a registration area. He's always welcome to the village to do anything he wants and he helps us out as much as he can, which he always does on holiday and the car show. Let's see, the docks. I want to thank DPW for putting the docks in. I've been down there. I talked to a couple of the captains of the big boats and thanking them for coming up this part of the river and spending a couple of days in our docks. One said it's due to the pamphlets that I drop off there every year. Pamphlets are the schedule for Freedom Park. The other pamphlet is about our docking area. And another pamphlet is about our downtown village. It is a map of all the, all the things that we have going on. And they do accept that and they put it in their visitor's center. So the boats coming up going west on the Mohawk River through the locks, nowhere they could stay. I spoke to a number of captains. A couple of them have actually spent their second year here. And they actually really say, words of mouth was getting, getting around on the canal because it's a beautiful place to dock your boat. And then if you go down there right now, you see two huge boats, about 36, 40 footers. And they just say it's a perfect place. It's off the, off the beach path. It's got everything you need to know. It's got all the restaurants. It's got CVS. It's got everything they need. And they really enjoy it and they pass that good word on to... And they really enjoy it and they pass that good word on to uh, other boaters in the area, so uh, we, we actually doubled our amount to boaters already this year, so it's really good. It looked real well. And we hope we continue that. Uh, as long as I can get the information down to the Waterford Harbor and the visitor's center and then people pick it up. Uh, I also wanna thank the office staff, they've been very busy down there and I wanna thank them for keeping our flowers uh, blooming through, through this heat. Uh, this is uh, their uh, planners that trustee and uh, trustee me and uh, trustee Gray bought and donated to the village, so uh, they were putting the marks, marks with some flowers in it. It makes the part of the building look real nice. So we wanna thank the office staff for keeping that up and they've been very busy and we hope to keep that up. Uh, Freedom Park has been going very good this year. Uh, even though the weather's been hot, uh, we have a, a joy band down there right now, uh, an old forty band playing down there. It's very well accepted and a lot of people follow that group around. And uh, this year they have a brand new stage to act on and the whole, uh, whole state has been redone thanks to the Parks Department, DPW. And uh, they say the best is yet to come, so we've been in a real good season.
And, and the generous grant from the county.
Yeah, let's uh, yeah, the county. Let's hope we have a good turnout and we keep it up and that's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Justin?
Absolutely, so uh, the Scotia Business Improvement District is meeting um, very, very soon, this Tuesday, actually. Uh, last Tuesday, sorry. Um, I will say, uh, the businesses are, are chugging along. Um, you'll notice uh. That storied coffee moved locations from their location down across the street from kind of that Route fifty, Route five corridor. Um, to the old uh, place where I got my tattoo. Um, I've been there a couple of times and it is a great cozy environment. They have a, they have a kitchen. Um, and a, a great little porch air, a great little bay window to kind of sit by and enjoy a cup of coffee. Uh, I'm also proud to say uh, that in September. Uh, we will have a bakery opening up in the old storied location. So if you were down here for cruising the avenue, you'll notice the bakery is there. Um, they'll open up. Uh, I've been told by the business owner, they're looking for an opening around September. Uh, but in the meantime, you can actually check them out at the Schenectady Green Market. Uh, Nibbles in Nash is their name. And I can tell you their peanut butter chocolate cookies are addicting. Um, so uh, parents, if you're gonna buy them for your kids, know that you're gonna have to go to the Schenectady Green Market every other week. To buy them for them. Um, they're delicious, so I know a bakery is something that uh, village residents have been asking for a while. Um, and with that, with that said, one of the things I, I'd like to encourage the, the village board um, to perhaps host a, a village hall session. Um, is just a conversation about what are the types of small businesses we'd like to see on Mohawk Avenue? Um, there is, there is not a lot of vacancy. Um, the vac, the actual vacancy rate is less than ten percent. Um, so, but the space that is available, what types of businesses do we as village residents want so that we can go down and we can support? Um, I'm noticing a trend that a lot of family-friendly businesses are doing quite well, whether it be the skate shop, uh, Scotia Music Academy, um, even the comic book store. Um, and the florist, um, you know, and, and the florist lives in the village, as does the comic book, uh, the comic book owner. Um, so these are neighborhood businesses and um, you know, a, a, as we also look to kind of going into the school year and I hope everyone, uh, everyone out there. Uh, a young person chooses an instrument to play. Um, we have a music shop here, here in town as well. We have Scotia Cinema. So I, I do think we need to do, start doing some long-term uh, business planning and, and trying to identify. Uh, what types of businesses, you know, village residents want, neighbors want, guests want, um, and beginning to uh, you know, put in place the idea that Scotia's open for business. Um, you know, since the beginning of the pandemic, we've actually welcomed uh, if my count was about seven new businesses to Mohawk F. Um, since the beginning of the pandemic, so that's something I think we should all celebrate and we should get out and support. Um, they're obviously, the bid, bid businesses are looking forward to the next special event, which will be uh, holiday in the app, so thank you uh, trustee Rizzo for your leadership on the special events committee. So uh, in terms of the zoning board, it's been a pretty quiet month with zoning. Uh, zoning board did not have to meet, so that means we didn't have to issue any variances or, or settle any issues there. The police department, however, has been very busy this month, um, with two major events in the village that attracted well, each event attracting well over or close to four thousand. Not only village residents, but guests from all over the region. So um, I wanna thank Sergeant Daniel Bean for his leadership on uh, leading the public safety. Initiatives and coordinating not only the Scotia Police Department, but also the Schenectady County Police Auxiliary for the uh, car show cruising on the avenue. Um, I also want to take a moment and just address uh. The incredible work that our village police department did um, for the Fourth of July. I'll wait.
Go ahead.
Um, so the, the incredible job our village police department did, um, so the, the sergeants had to um, essentially manage. Seventy-five police officers from six different agencies. So if you went there, you saw the, the mounted unit from city of Schenectady. You saw the Schenectady County sheriffs both. On the road, on the sidewalk and in the, and in the river. Um, you had Glenville, uh, and you also had Scotia. Um, and I even saw an Albany police car rolling around uh, the village at that area. So seventy-five police officers were, were on location during that event to ensure safety. Now, everything that's on village residents' mind is that there was an incident that occurred on the corner of uh, James Street and Route fifty. And because we were properly staffed with that, um, while this is an ongoing, uh, ongoing investigation. The suspect of the incident was apprehended by Scotia police officers within minutes of receiving the call. The dispute appears to be an isolated incident that was fueled by alcohol. The chief is currently conducting a debriefing of the incident um, with the department and will provide an after-action report. This report um, will help improve safety and planning for all uh, future village uh, special events, especially these mass gatherings. Um, the after-action report will be completed uh, by Detective Peckham as part of his new role as uh, the Community Resource Officer. Um, the department is taking these steps to reassure all village residents that we are, as a village, taking all the necessary actions to improve the safety of all our large events. So I want folks to know that when you do come down to these, these events, that we will be properly staffed and properly able to, to um, deal with uh, you know, incidents as they arise. Um, I've also um, expressed my concern to the, to the police chief and he agrees, as all our village police department agrees, that when we do have these special events, it is important. That village residents and our guests respect the no alcohol policy in Collins Park. Also to respect the no smoking policy in Collins Park, which includes the use of marijuana and cannabis products, either vaping or smoking in the park. Because when you are in mass gatherings like this, if you bring in alcohol in a cooler or in an open container. Um, you know, it, unfortunately, some folks among us can't hold their alcohol. Um, it's also an issue when, at, you know, getting out of these things. You have people getting in the cars or walking the streets, um, inebriated. Um, rest assured that I'm sure whatever this action, action report, uh, post-action report uh, puts in. That uh, a focus on enforcing the no alcohol limit will, is going to have to be something we're going to have to address. Um, I wanna thank the board for passing the resolution allowing for part-time police officers. Um, again, this will be used for, to backfill. Um, uh, overtime, um, which will allow us to reduce our, our, use our, our overtime line more efficiently. Um, background checks have been completed for uh, by detectives for three potential candidates and these folks will be um, activated on an as-needed basis. Um, I also raise your hand if you, within the last ten years, have actually walked to school to Lincoln Elementary School or drove by on your way to Lincoln Elementary School. Um, I wanna congratulate our crossing guard, uh, Michael Beverley. He was nominated and received the Rotary Citizen of the Year Award. For his outstanding commitment and service to the Village of Scotia. And I have to say, the members of the PVA uh, made a donation to the Scotia Food Pantry. Um, in his honor. Um, you, you heard mentioned in trustee Gray's report that Community Resource Officer position. Um, has been filled by Detective uh, Peckham. He is a, uh, he is a village boy. He grew up here in the village. Um, and I, I can't think of a better person to attend, uh, to, to be in that position and I look forward uh, to hearing all about his training. Um, when he goes off to training for the School Resource Officer position. I think it's important and timely to mention too, that he actually just uh, successfully completed the High Risk Unified Commander Training Program. Um, it was hosted by Schenectady PD at the Scotia Glenville High School. Um, this particular uh, high-risk unified commander position makes him a suitable person to lead. Um, any potential emergencies or active shooter incidences that may occur. God forbid, anywhere in this village. Um, training is key when it comes to that. Um, park guard positions have been fully staffed for the year, um, and great work to Sergeant Coke for his leadership in that. Um, we are currently looking to hire uh, crossing guards or traffic safety officers for the upcoming year. So if you or someone you know is interested in, in working for the village and helping our young folks cross the uh, cross the, the road to school safely. Um, please contact Chief Harrigan or the, the village police department. Um, we had all, all were in attendance for the Police Reform Committee. Um, and. Yeah, congratulations again, once again, to Sergeant Coke for outstanding coordination of the village fireworks. That is my report.
Okay.
But I wanna shout out Sheila and Ollie. Go team.
Thank you. Um, departmental reports, we have a motion to accept.
I'll make a motion to accept the park, park reports with thanks.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Uh, item fifteen, uh, the budget adjustments for the month of June, can we adjust books?
I'd like to make a motion to uh, make all the necessary budget adjustments for the month of June.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Hi. Hi.
Hi, um, item sixteen, audit claims, can we pay the bills?
I'll make a motion that the village stores have paid the bills for the month of June.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Hi. Hi.
Uh, item seventeen, new business. Does anybody have any new business? Item eighteen, we have a motion to adjourn. Thank you, everybody.
Coming tonight. It's really nice to see all the young people.
So yeah, I mean, even though there are more than half of that was trustee cook, it was, it was good to listen to, so. Thank you, everybody. Good night.
It was a busy month at the police department.
Don't say anything more, trustee cook.